We decided.
You guys heard it?
Yeah.
All right, calling to order. The um video of the whole admin and operations Monday, February twelfth. A meeting which is also known as budget meeting number three. They have an agenda in front of us. Are there any changes to the agenda as it's written? Seeing none, then need somebody to move the agenda. By Council Ward, second by Council Smale. Discussion, none, all in favor? Good exposure of community area interest, conflict of interest and the general nature thereof. Does anyone have a conflict?
No.
None, moving on. Um business arising from the committee um of the whole meeting minutes, if there are any, does anyone have any business arising? Seeing none delegations and presentations, there are none, no items under consent agenda. Number seven is discussion items and we start with seven A. Which is digital signage and I believe Council Ward, you're gonna do a little presentation or bring this item forward?
I put a little presentation in the agenda, actually, and it was uh we'd had some discussions recently. Um pertaining to uh to community signs and ways to another, another, you know, an additional method, if you will, to get uh get sort of the word out on things happening in the community as well as uh you know, you know, you know, good community events and and emergencies and things like that. And so I did a little bit of research and uh was just looking at pricing as we talked about um putting an agenda, putting putting an item on the budget. Or, you know, I think we said roughly thirty thousand or so, or to investigate some signs, sign it, do a digital signage. And so I put a presentation in here to to talk to that and uh and I did some research as well and uh um basically, you know, one of the, I set a really good site to talk about what digital signs could do for the community. And uh you know, the real things that they talked about there were, you know, boosting engagement for parks and recs. So, you know, whenever you have a event coming up, you can put it on the sign and and people, as they drive by, see that or walk by, can see that. Um promoting other community events that are not just township based, so you know, if we have something going on at the Legion or talking about the fair or you know, or 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 Labor Day at the Cardinal, things like that, you can put them on all the signs or or specific ones of the signs as well. So you don't have to actually focus on all signs being the same, for instance, that was good thing to do. Um and that's what, you know, to improve safety and awareness, you know, talk about road closures, water issues, if there's a weather warning coming up. Um you know, things that maybe the fire department might go out there like check your batteries on on the front smoke detectors and things like that. Um and I put governance on here as well, you know, upcoming public meetings that we have in in this chamber, for instance. Uh or, you know, ads if we're hiring, for instance, in the township, okay, if you want your firefighters, you can put them on there as well. Uh as well as any other public information and I just, it's just sort of because you can, you can program these things. And so when I put the why digital signs as opposed to regular signs, um one of the things that I found is uh that they're basically all updatable um and it doesn't seem to be an extra charge for it um with regards to the actual uh components, I'll say on the sign. Um they're updatable through four and five G data plans. Um so you can, you can update it from the office, you can actually have it linked in some cases in some signs directly to a certain feed if you have a website that does that, you can actually maybe do do it directly from our social media potentially if we wanted to. Or our or our um our our online calendar for the township. Um and there's no need to add lighting to it, of course, because um they uh the sign obviously has its own light and at night it even actually changes, it adjusts its brightness and everything so that you can see it better at night um. Uh and then uh it will, it uses less energy to do that as well, of course, because it's darker background. Then you can change the theme as often as you want and uh and it stands out obviously better than a big game of signage. So those are some of the benefits and and I mean, I did find some examples that I pulled up here, I didn't, I don't have the ones that are on the screen here priced. Um and I mean, there's all sorts of options, you can buy just the screen or you can buy signs that are stood up. Um you can buy your own signs as well, although I took a look, they're uh they're a lot more expensive to have one that's that's mobile, if you will, because you gotta pay for the trailer as well and stuff. But um you know, I have some good examples that were, you know, um in the nine, you know, eight, well, anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars, for instance, each. Um that were standalone signs, you'd have to plug into the, you know, stand into the ground and have an electrical source for them. If you wanted solar, it doesn't do that good a job because it doesn't necessarily power the whole thing properly. Uh for twenty four, twenty four seven, so you're better off to have it, you know, on the grid. Essentially, um and uh yeah, I mean, I just, I just wanted to have a talk about that because I do think it's something that will help us to get that communication out a little bit. To another medium to us, if you will, and uh I I think it's worth, um and like I said, this is my investigating, obviously, staff would have to do a better job of you know, getting it written or requesting for quotes and putting that out there more properly, but I did think it was a good opportunity for us to have this uh uh just popping up around the township and helping to get uh more people to know when things go on.
But thank you, Council. Uh all right, so uh is a discussion item, who wants to contribute first?
Yeah, I think I think they're a great idea, I've seen more and other city who's on and I think they're a fantastic way to get the the word out and what's going on. I guess the biggest question would be how many we would need and then where they would be placed, right? Because that would be the, you know, you're gonna want one. I think closer to four sixteen, if you're coming into Johnstown and then I'll just answer, I'd like you just have to be careful where you put them so that everybody had a chance to see them.
Yeah, exactly, and then and then through the chair, that's okay. Um I had the same thought you did, I thought coming into Cardinal, you know, either around the uh the the Highway two and and Shandley Road uh uh area and that area there, for instance, um I sort of thought right at the Highway sixteen um and and Johnstown essentially, that little park that's there would be a good place. But that's, you know, that's just my thinking and I mean, obviously, somebody should do a better study, to make sure we know the best places to have them. And then I thought, as you're coming right into Spencerville, either off the four sixteen. Um you know, around that area there or or maybe right on the township property, but it depends on, you know, it they they both get good traffic, but I think you'll see that we make better traffic rate coming off the four sixteen and twenty four. That forty four, so it's.
I like that.
Yeah.
Same thing, Chair, I like the idea, but the uh we'd have to get like three of them right, one for each unit. That will trip them across, well, this is yeah, I think they'd be super effective.
Council.
Yeah, I find that it's gonna be a great idea, I know I go up the the third every Sunday and the Gus has got one right in there in front of their restaurant building.
Yeah.
And they put everything on there while you're driving, you're reading it. But they still feel it's supposed to roll. And they say it's totally kept it alive.
There's a cautionary tale in it, for sure.
I know, I'm in comment that it's it's great, I mean, where we're gonna locate, it's a different story. Uh that would be up to staff, I just have one question maybe to Mr. Spencer, is there hydro on the corner there? Are the ones that we have there?
Through the chair.
I'm not sure what occasion you refer to.
Uh the one on the corner, four sixteen and and number two. The one where, the one where Sarah is, yeah, is there any hydro there? Nothing, right? Yeah. That's my only answer would be probably the best bet is there. I mean, there's always something like he said. Solar. But uh no, I think it's a great idea. I didn't, I thought the price, I thought it'd be a little bit more expensive, actually.
I I have found some more expensive than yours.
No, no, good job. John?
All right, that's an idea, most municipalities are going to the digital signs. Just, I think. You have to figure out capital line, mine, I would like it to be around forty five dollars, you're gonna be three of, but three municipalities that in them or free areas in the municipality, they're looking at, so I think good idea, but I think it's something you're gonna have to tell them, they're gonna have to weigh their own budget, when they can afford to do it or whether they wanna do all three at once or whether it's something to spread over a three year period in the order which you wanna establish them. Like the dragon water opening, every, a reading and stuff, all the digital signs, trying to change what's going on, so talk about the one you want to use a arena, if they change all that time. From there. Like, though.
For sure. Well. I certainly support the idea as well, there's some overrated for me, I I like, I actually like the the three fixed, um but I also, you know, see value in ones that are the potential addition of ones that could move that you know, help out with the, you know, the Cedar Grove road closure and and uh you know, when that happens for the EDRs and making sure the traffic gets directed in the right, in the right places, so. Um. But you looking to have something in this year's budget, Councilor Ward, there's every single person who said yes. Um. You, are you looking to have staff bring us back more information? What what what's your goal?
Well, and and like I said, I think what I, what I found is I did find, you know, what I think is an adequate looking sign, if you will, um with good color, uh fixed signs for, you know, uh let's call it ten thousand dollars a piece, roughly, it was nine thousand dollars, but there's always gonna be install and and delivery and things like that, so it might as well include some factor for that. So it would be about thirty thousand plus install um to put a sign in each of the uh in each of the towns. So I think if we put a, you know, what I, and I did ask us to put in, for me talking about the operations budget, which I think is part of next meeting. Uh to put in thirty K, what if we should put in a forty K uh thing to comment to talk about uh for that meeting, so.
Well, our next item on our agenda is our operating budget.
It was, so, I I didn't know that, by the way.
I hope we read it.
I did, yes. I thought there was actually more discussion.
I know, I know this is our last meeting, it's all saved. The budget, that's all, so. Yeah. Um. Uh so. So. There's certainly a strong support for signage, for the signs or for some measure of signs. Um. I mean, typically, we would, we would kick this back to staff, have staff present us with you know, some different options, I mean, instead of just picking a number like thirty K on on work that one of us did. Um, you know, I don't know that that's appropriate anyway, um. You know, normally, we would like you guys to source it, find, you know, what other municipalities have done, give us more information or report that would come back. But I guess we're, I guess the ask is, would we wanna hold a line in this year's budget? Uh for that, or is there a way that it could be covered potentially under this year's budget?
Uh through the chair. I did, I, I guess you could go ahead. Two ways uh with respect to to coming back with, give us some more information, potentially uh incorporate that in as part of that communication strategy on how we're going to uh communicate with the, with with the general uh population. You want, you're market certain amount that in in point going forward specifically. Uh to 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 sort of assist with that particular portion, whether that's in the in the operating side or the capital side. Um is is certainly one option, I guess the other option would be that we, we come back with some additional information, monitor sort of the uh uh budget activity and it appears like we don't, we don't have some, some some room, but we can proceed a little bit later uh in in on here.
Yeah, but I like that option, um. Just wanna make sure, so if staff's gonna come back with a report, so the the general comments, just to make sure they were all uh considered was like connectivity for sure. You know, uh wiring costs, signal ongoing, operational cost, maintenance costs, that sort of thing. Um how many we were going to actually buy and where they were going to be located, so when a report came, I would hope that those, you know, those main points that everyone was concerned with.
And for the chairs, is that something you would look as as part of, like that overall communication strategy or sort of out of the stand alone?
Well, I think that that can be continued discussion, I think maybe around around the table, I know what it would be for me, but I'm just one person, so. Uh Karen, do you wanna go again?
I I really don't know how it would fit that, whether it would fit, that's as part of the communication strategy or you know, I mean, uh me that tomorrow's staff, if you can, then.
Yeah. John?
I'd wanna see it as part of the of a greater communications. Piece of money. You know, it's how much we're gonna spend on communications, this is our budget, you know, if staff from your back just with some prices, this is how much of or by costs, this is how much of two by seven cost, you know, just give us a ballpark of what we're looking at.
Yeah, but as part of a bigger puzzle.
But as part of the bigger plan, I I don't see any sense to piece work in it here.
Yeah. Still work.
I agree totally with the stuff about that.
Say what?
I'm uh I I I like the idea, I just don't like in twenty twenty three, or uh you know, twenty twenty four, the budget coming in of of all three. Um, I'd like to see first of all, what what staff comes back at before they really make a commitment, I mean, I'm all in for one, maybe two, but I can't see it's demand all three this year, so, I mean, and that's just my opinion, I'm just one person, but I like to see more information. On price translation.
Yeah.
Before I make a final decision.
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, like I said, I think, uh I mean, I'm not, this is really sold on all three this year as well, I'd like to, you know, get us, get us started on this direction and uh but you know, I, but I'm worried about is I don't want it to get buried into the weeds of, you know, depending on when we're gonna have that that greater overall communication strategy conversation. Um you know, if that's gonna be pushed out until the fall, I don't want it to you know, I'd like to make sure that we have something we do this year with regards to it. Um so you know, if if it doesn't become something that's being pushed to November, December, we'll talk about it, this kind of this again, then I'd like to do something before that, so.
Okay.
Uh. I think uh definitely merit it. I know, the same path, I would be thinking, you're pretty willing to, your budget, you're here shutting your budget for issue, I think this is something that you could give with all other things you've put in the staff plate to evaluate for your anxious given this year to really research it out, so to go back to your next budget. Here, you know, exactly locations, how much it's gonna cost for that location and what type of sign and and stuff is going in there and just kind of shooting at a ballpark there, there now to say approve something for a sign until you actually know the cost, what the operating costs in them, because there's gonna be an operating cost on, it goes be the software or stuff that you're gonna have to buy and go along with these signs, the changes, but it's gonna be the price of the sign, so I think you should give yourself this year to really research it out and just can discuss it over the year, year coming up to the fall. What what you do and we've got a sound price, price plan, we can all always approve a pre-budget spending, if we figure you got enough information to locate one in the fall, so.
Yeah. Well, listen, uh I think I think there's a lot of fruit to that, we've given staff quite a quite a budget to work on this year and there's a lot of work and a lot of things that are going on and uh piling on another report in in the first quarter anyways, or maybe even the second quarter is probably not reasonable, but I would like, you know, I think uh a little more urgency than than next budget, so you know, um second, you know, Q, late Q two or or early Q three, so that we could either do something this year, if it was potentially if it was possible or or definitely that we would make a pre-budget discussion for approval ahead for next year.
So, yeah, through the, through the, you know, the plan, we'll be back with the term of reference for the sort of how to make with respective communication strategy in 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 March, hopefully. We could have something at the latter part of the second quarter.
Awesome, okay, great, good work, Councilor Ward. You're well done. All right, so the fun stuff begins, um it'll be the draft operating budget and you're gonna speak to it?
To the Chair, um that I, excuse me, I know it says draft operating budget, but I've actually presented the consolidated budgets. Um just uh going past or going through what uh we talked about the last half meeting. Uh just incorporated all those uh changes into the budget and then was able just to prove that the the consolidated budget. Um the budget is balanced and uh it has a meaningful tax rate increase of three percent. Um assuming that the county increase remains the same as last year, six point seven. Uh it'll result in a total tax increase of three point eight seven two percent, which amounts to forty nine dollars and nine cents increase per hundred thousand dollars in assessed value. So that is just to to balance the the operating budget, obviously, once we know what the the rate of community counting. We'll present that another one uh with tax rates and then the full impact of that.
I think we're there, I think I don't, I did, we haven't finalized it yet, but I think it'll happen um on the the third Thursday, whatever it's at, I'm saying too, and I think it's at at right now uh six point two eight.
Okay.
I think is the they could that, and there may be a slight change uh to that, we did have it down to five. It was five, seven, eight, and they decided to add uh point five back in for um increasing app and trying to get a couple more loads paid every year, so I think that that's I think that that's what we're gonna land on, is six two.
Perfect.
Good.
And that will, that will bring the, obviously, a bit lower than uh three point eight seven two. Um two of the biggest uh drivers of the budget is always going to be uh cost living for salaries and insurance. Uh so the quota was already approved at four point nine three percent and insurance is expected to rise ten percent year over year. Uh those represent the larger student increases in the budget. Uh there is a couple of items on the council uh budget uh around community grants and donations. Uh originally was at fifty thousand and uh what's put in the budget in front of you is fifty thousand. Um it includes the original fifteen thousand plus um potential funding for um Sherwood Park Diner, which the Osswoods uh twelve thousand five hundred for three years, uh Maple New Landing, uh seven thousand five hundred for three years. And then there was also talk about uh capital grants or festival support uh that would be directed towards legions and and uh and other things like that, so all of that is a natural for the fifty thousand.
So just stop for one sec, so so those three items are included in that line item that says fifty thousand for community grants and donations. Leaving, leaving us with the fifteen thousand that we've always had to do towards Connect Youth and any other organization that'll make applications.
Correct.
Okay.
So so should council, uh we should go with that and everything would stay at at three percent, um. Obviously, if uh there's some of this funding that you'd like to defer or reconsider, then uh the final um rating decrease would be a little bit less than three percent.
Okay.
Um there's also two business spaces for public works uh that will be presented and uh both of those projects are paid out of the modernization reserves. So it has no impact on the tax rate, so um it'll be a zero uh not a factor to the budget, should go to that story.
Okay, so question before we go any further, uh Chris, or so what you're saying is if if we look at the consolidated, both the the draft operational and uh capital with everything that we've looked at so far, what we will look at tonight with everything that's included in there.
Yeah.
The uh tax increase will be somewhere south of three point eight seven two.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody understands where we're already at and forwards. Go to work.
And if if going, loo- looking at the uh the next page, which is the, uh page thirteen of one sixty nine. Uh there's the consolidated uh budget sheet. Uh I have put uh some comments in uh where necessary, so the the taxation revenue is the three percent levy increase plus the one point two percent of the assessment growth uh provided from NPAP. Um another thing to note with uh with other revenues, um I was uh a little more aggressive than last year on uh on our interest income, uh but still uh conservative, knowing that interest rates will fall as the year goes on. Uh under operating expenses, um again, the the quota is is pretty self-explanatory, um plus any extra staffing adds. Uh for professional development mileage, um we're just expecting increased usage this year. Uh usually, we budgeted it and never really used it fully, so um we we have up that uh that budget and with going to to Roll Mine and other conferences, we're we're uh chalking towards a better utilization of of those funds that the side. Uh insurance, uh file hasn't been received yet. Um as far as materials and supplies, uh there's some additional uh community improvement projects that were expected in the uh economic development budget, which is driving some of that increase up. Um as far as vehicle and fleet expenses, um lowering stated uh maintenance costs, we did get uh um we did have some unexpected maintenance last year, which uh I'll talk some more when we do the budget's actual for Q four. Um for principal and interest payments, uh down overall of twelve percent, uh like case creator loan. Uh will be paid in full in uh June twenty twenty four, uh the wreck truck lease suspension twenty twenty four. Um you'll see that at the at the long term uh debt, uh so so our overall uh debt payments are going down. Even though we've added uh the the drainage uh project. Um we're still overall going down, which is a good sign. And then for capital, um you know, you'll see the the normal uh sheet when we get to that action item. Uh later with the capital budget, but four point two six four million was the the amount that was um that was included and, you know, pending approvals. Um as far as the surplus, um right now, we're sitting at forty thousand dollars or forty one thousand dollars for a surplus, um which includes the with entries, which uh you'll see um a little bit later. Uh but overall, um the really good uh management of of the twenty twenty three budget. And uh we're, we're in a good spot going into twenty twenty four. Now, while it is concerning the impact reserves, it's showing a two million dollar drawdown of reserves. Um the key thing to note is we've been saving in our dedicated capital reserve for two years plus uh the gas tax, so CCBF and OSIP. So we plan to use all that this year, that's why you're seeing uh usually high draw from reserves, so we've uh with the rear road bridge getting deferred till uh till twenty twenty four, that was an OSIP project, so we're just transferring from twenty three dollars to twenty twenty four and using the twenty twenty four.
And that uh dedicated capital reserve fund was funded with um um sell off of excess inventory from the port.
That is correct.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a million dollars.
Yes, it was built, that reserve was specifically built to to be utilized, not to be saved, to actually be built, be put back into roads, bridges, infrastructure.
Capital, it was to assist with our capital.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Clear.
Are you finished?
I I'm
Okay, all right, so this is a discussion item, it is open for discussion, who wants to, I'm gonna just go, who wants to go first? Uh Councilor, or sorry, Deputy Mayor and then Councilor Ward.
Uh yes, I just had a couple, a couple of questions, on the uh operating grants, one million seven hundred forty two thousand dollars, where do we, where do we come up with that, or how do we get these operating grants?
The operating grants, uh but some of those operating grants are uh OMPF, so the Ontario Municipal uh uh and I'll hand, I don't, but I can, I can get you what the breakdown of those grants are, but OMPF is one of the bigger ones.
Okay, and and in the same way, we're on that, um on on the capital grants to the thirty seven, if you could just look that up too.
Yeah, that is, that is wholesome.
Okay, that's all, okay.
Yeah, so the the operating grants would also include the the gas tax as well.
Okay, good, that's um, that's all I had for that one, thank you.
Uh Councilor Ward?
Uh yeah, I just, I was, and it's just one small, small little item, but when I look at the utilities.
Uh what?
The utilities, so I'm at the middle of the page.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm just trying to figure it, so last year we had four sixty three, four sixty four, and and I guess the previous year was three ninety five, whatever else, and then this year we're we're planning it to be less, is there a reason why we're not expecting to be, I guess, as bad as last year or even why is it a bit better than prior three years in total, or not totally, but to what?
Um. Some of it is is commodity based, like we do use propane, meat, some parts of of the of the township, so that was all costs of the work. Um I'm not sure, uh maybe I'll I'll open it to to the directors on the other side, um with what they were seeing as far as uh hypercosts. With what they were seeing as far as uh hypercosts year over years.
So yeah, I'll start first and um for the arena operations typically, the arena, sorry, typically months, ten months. This year um April, we had June, our April, May, the plums, we got running once, the other one. So there is a reduction of.
April, May and uh and and August, you know, I said, right?
Well, that probably explains what I mean that's that's a big part of that.
There is a small, there was a small reduction on the right side.
Okay, I mean, look, I just I just saw that and stood out, you know, when last year was four sixty three and also we're knocking it down by eighty thousand down to this.
Like, yeah, we do. Um I'll just go back to that one, uh cause it's one of the ones that I flagged in my notes on my computer as well, Mike. So um to the heat line, to the water and sewer line and and to the uh hydro. As well, so twenty six, five, thirty nine, seven and fifteen, both in the negatives. So are we thinking we're gonna use less water in sewer as as well? Because we're gonna be close those three months and that'll that'll equate to that deficit? Okay, and same through the through the hydro and. And even the heat line. Uh alright, so I had BM first and I had councillor Ward, you spoke, right? Is there more discussion on this? It is going to come forward as an action item, so sir.
I just have one question. Fireway, uh considering the capital owners, the grants, uh is there some explanation why it's dropped in twenty four? Compared to twenty three?
Yes, uh in twenty twenty three, they would have the I six grant for uh for duty accountable to.
Good, anyone else?
So are we just talking to the summary page, Mr. Mr. Chair, or just any page at all of the uh in the budget?
And it's a budget, it's a twenty twenty four, uh well, it's awesome. It's I guess technically it's operated budget, so any of the budget is operated. Questions on it, Chris?
Well, I had questions, but I think I've changed it. I just I noticed that like you believe over the uh the salaries were four point nine three percent. There's a lot of areas where it were higher than that, but when I look at the average, the summary sheet, obviously, that was just, it's a bit of um moving labor around between departments, et cetera, and soon, right?
It it is uh through the chair and councillor Ward um. There's. I I think there's some uh tweaking that needs to be done on R N as far as how some of the salaries are allocated between departments. So that's might be what's driving a a bit of that. So um my my hope is when we do our project software in. That it'll be a little bit easier to call and and how it is coming.
Everybody else is gone? I've got a couple, so um. At what point are we gonna talk about um the year to date actuals on uh vehicle repairs me?
Uh we can talk about that in uh budget actual, so we can talk about that in uh I uh I N B A.
Okay, so we're. We're gonna, we're gonna do it in there?
Yes, yeah, if if it's related to twenty twenty three, yes.
Yeah, well, and and I mean ultimately the draft budgets. You know, hundred and forty or hundred and thirty five less, or hundred and thirty six less for next year, uh which I'm very hopeful of. But um you know, I need to understand those numbers, I guess.
Sure.
Uh first, and then growth pain for growth. Um in our uh planning department and our um and our. Building C D O uh department, so not, you know, we're quite quite a bit over. Uh there, that department is supposed to pay for for itself, the growth is supposed to to pay for itself, so. Where where are we in that number? I don't have the sheet in front of me, but.
I do right here.
I think it was ninety five or ninety six thousand, if I remember.
Ninety two, three, five, seven.
That we are, so I mean, I know it's, I'm assuming that the costs are associated with. With the permits being quite a bit lower. Um this year, but you know. See anybody to speak to it, so somebody at your table is gonna have to speak to it.
I know there's in, there was increased cost in the planning because of, you know, we did some reviews and we did quite a bit of extra review. And we asked for peer reviews and stuff like that, and I can understand that part of it, but you know, ultimately, growth was, this one's supposed to pay for itself, so.
Yeah, I think it's really uh. There. You can comfortably say in twenty twenty three that there wasn't a um. Large amount of um. Industrial commercial permitting, um I'm not sure that we have the same number of uh of of. Of 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 new home starts. Maybe that end of it, it was it was a number of of uh. All our permits of uh 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 decks or small sheds, which are probably uh. If there's a higher requirement to that, the. The building permit fee does not cover all of the inspectors' time in that regard. So some some instances where there's where there's uh the uh the emergency starts or. Uh what is your uh uh commercial?
And we added added a person to that department so that we could help offset, you know, the. The difficulty, but the understanding was that that would, you know, increase efficiency and be offset by. Increased permit fees and and shortening the time span.
Yeah, I think I I think through the through the chair, uh it it certainly hasn't um. Uh developed as I I I expect as we 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 would like to see, and I think we're all anticipating. And all hopeful that we can look, we can get those draft plans and subdivisions uh rolling uh sooner than. Than 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 later and uh that they'll be up here with the back.
Well, in fairness to our planning department and our and our C D O and you guys, I think. You guys don't control inflation, you guys don't control the cost of materials, and builders don't wanna build. Uh because of those costs, they don't see a profit, that's ultimately not. Uh yours, but we do still have to bear those costs, so in in a budget, so my just. Um and I think it's a problem that's universal. I think it's, we're not the only ones going through that, so.
No, I I I would certainly say that we're a bit of a. Um a a a transition. Look, look at this respect to uh. Out of the 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 uh additional building inspectors, but I'm I'm understanding that the. C D O is 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 a sort of city, right? More on on draft basis, you know.
Um, anyone else wanna go?
Yeah, I I do, like this. Mister Mayor for May, he's on. I'm on the same one on the building budget, um we're we're down a hundred and twenty six. Where do we get that? Where's our, like, our our reserves? I remember a couple of years ago, we had a pretty good buildup of reserves in the building department. Where does that leave us? Because uh we're gonna have a big deficit if, I hope, and I hope you guys are way wrong on this one. In twenty twenty four too, like a hundred and forty five thousand. So what was our? What is that building? We had it built up pretty good, I just wanna know. That's gonna be two years, that's gonna be a hundred and forty five, a hundred and twenty six, so gosh, two, almost two hundred and fifty grand. Well, we'll be two fifty. In twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. It's in there now? Is this after the one twenty six or no?
Uh through the chair to the Deputy Mayor, uh the way that those deficits are addressed is the overall. Operating deficit surplus, so we're in an overall surplus of of forty thousand dollars or so. So we don't have to close those by department. It's more um. Once we go through the year and got it and uh we know what the actual the copies of. Surplus or deficit, then we would uh uh bring something to council to uh and committee to. Say how you want out of that surplus, but we don't close individual departments.
But we're still at the basis because it is a deficit.
It is a deficit, so.
And 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 the building, like like the rare said, supposed to run on its own, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Um I had one, Sean, I or treasure, I asked one question of you from I T. And this what always happens to me when I try not to use my iPad, I get lost in paper, so um. Uh there was I T and I know the answer was scanning, but it was a large number. Can you speak to that line item that I asked you about?
I can, yes. So uh that item was uh we were about uh twenty eight thousand dollars over budget. Um in in our uh I T services for twenty twenty three. And that was related to uh the the scanning project that we had uh for for five volt get prior offerings in. And it was a budget I know was actually approved in twenty twenty two. Uh but didn't actually get done until twenty twenty three and then forced in twenty twenty three, so uh. It it was covered by uh resolution that it was covered under the Modernization Fund, so. Uh but we'll still see the overage on the expense side. Because we had funded for for that uh since it was in twenty twenty two.
Yeah, it's line item seventeen fifty three twenty four.
Fifty three twenty four?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I T service, I see.
Then you'll see that it goes up to one fourth. Okay, alright. Well, uh does anyone else have anything else to add?
Okay, I just uh the one of the last things I had written down here was um on page twenty, I guess it is uh one sixty nine. Um the uh the C I P, so under the uh, I'm sorry, the economic development budget. I see a lot of the revenues we talked about and and uh. Uh just like when I see the C I P township projects and the C I P program brand grants. Uh forty five K and thirty five K respectively in the budget, but this year we had seventy two hundred and sixteen hundred respectively, or seventy respectively. Is do we know what's getting us to be that number, or is that um we're we're speculating at this point in time?
So through the Senator, with respect to the C I P section of the projects, I think you recall last week we talked about the red grant. For uh for 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 some of the cleanup area, that's that that that's part of the. Increase to 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 cover portion uh that way. With respect to the C I P program grants, uh it's thirty. Uh there's thirty thousand in. Each year and and we have a number of projects that are sort of on the way, so it's a it's a matter of when those projects completely runs the invoice is. And uh in anyway, that that dollars, we just made sure that that's top up. So so that's available for uh for projects that need to come up in funding. Okay, that makes sense.
I think we did, so like if twenty five hundred gets used, they only top up the twenty five hundred. And I don't think anybody else is gonna go, so um I think this is the part where I say. Uh well done to Sean and and the staff at um, you know, all levels, all the directors for. You know, it was a difficult year, it was a, you know, an inflationary year where things could have certainly got out of control. And the commitment that uh everyone at the, you know, the office makes to help keep those numbers in check and in. Control is is fantastic and um. You know, I often enough, we don't say thank you for, you know, keeping those numbers in line. I mean, ultimately, uh this is, you know, taxpayer dollars, it's, you know, the our residents. Money that we're we're looking at each and every time we look at budgets like these, and and every single one of those dollars matters to each one of those people. So the fact that we came out with a surplus, a small surplus, but a surplus last year uh is evident to the good work that all of you do. So um thank you for for that. Alright, so we're gonna move on to eight. A, which is action item, which is fourth quarter treasury and reserve report. And I assume, treasure, I'll speak to that?
Uh so a a tax looking out is all the Q four treasury and reserve reports uh as of the December thirty first. Uh so I'll go through all four individually. So with the caption Ben Down is looking at the three odd financial report as of the summer twenty third, seven thirty first point twenty three. Uh we did actually receive the extra grant payment for I S E P near the end of the year, so it did reduce our our A R. Um and I saw that we actually got uh another progress payment on that, so the only thing that's left is the tax sample. So we um satisfied all our grants obligations and this way, so there's completion on the project, we'll we'll give it a try. Uh tax is receivable, um. You know, a lot of things will change until after uh after the uh. Uh after the financial statements are complete. Um the one thing to note around reserve and reserve funds uh is uh. We did have to do that temporary uh adventure for temporary borrowing from uh reserves. Uh and uh we're set to receive the funds from Iowa this week that will offset uh that program. I mean, I'll go through all four of the reports if there's any question after uh. And.
Let's go through A, B, C, and D.
Yeah. Or or just just the four reports that are included with this uh.
With A.
So with the uh township's long term debt. Uh we do have uh some items coming off, so we thought uh uh it's. The United Counties for Fire Communications Equipment, we brought the twenty twenty case greater. And we brought the twenty nineteen G M C Sierra all set to to come off the books in uh. Um in twenty twenty four, so the only thing that we'll be left with is the two infrastructure Ontario. Uh that's one that we're gaining from Cardinal Arena. Um on the tile grating uh loans, um those will come up in uh in twenty twenty four as well. And uh the only one that will be out of supported debt is the uh the venture for part of the wastewater. Uh which will show up in Q one, that's the limits of the uh this week. Uh and then uh so at the end of uh. End of twenty twenty four, we'll, you have four items on uh our long term debt schedule and all four of them are related to structure Ontario. So um that uh reduces our overall. Uh payment commitment.
Page, are we on, Sean?
We are on page forty two of one sixty nine.
If I. May. Uh the EMS station stays on our debt, but we do not pay it, right? So it's not going anywhere, it'll stay there.
Yeah.
Um it's there till, I think, uh twenty thirty eight or something like that, but the United Counties base it in full, right?
Yeah, twenty thirty six, so yeah, we we just uh.
Uh alright, so questions in regard, are you finished, sorry?
Um yeah, maybe we can stop there for now before doing cap books and sure there are questions.
Okay, so questions regarding fourth quarter treasury and reserve report?
I will.
Ones, sure, just if you will, just walk us through the reserves, Sean.
Yeah, um do you want to cap the first?
Sure, if you want.
Yeah, I um so. The the only thing to note on on capital is uh. The the only thing to note on on capital is uh. Uh, we. Have spent a total of seven point three million. Uh, we had eight point four uh million in capital budget. Uh, we've deferred uh nine hundred and thirty two thousand. So. Uh, we were sitting in a good spot as far as as actually executing on the capital budget. Um, the one thing that's noted is uh the server replacement for it then. Uh. The doc, we didn't receive that until after we kind of closed everything off. So. Uh, we'll we'll see that uh in in twenty twenty four by the end. Uh, that budgeted, so uh we'll bridge.
What could us over uh? A duly chaired to a treasurer. Deferred to twenty twenty four, the nine thirty two. What was that? Nine thirty two?
Uh, so it's everything that is highlighted in uh orange. So it was the.
Okay. Oh, yes. We're bridge and other ten. Okay, good.
We're in S and E.
In our reservation and renovations.
Yeah, and and then same with the T five camera. Uh, we we've just uh. When we get uh. Uh, drop in in point from four, uh, it'll be paid on reserves. We just contributed that to.
Good, thank you.
You have any questions for our members here?
Okay, that's. It's a very healthy. Healthy budget. I agree. You know, you pretty much finished everything up. There was no chance that the uh. Um, we'd already made the decision on Edison Street in my recollection and in the railroad bridge. You know, at that one point last year that it was gonna need more work. So. I mean. Yeah, well done again.
Yeah, yeah, that is good. Just when medicine does get done, because I think. We kicked that down like three years now. I don't know. This is their third time. Right, correct? Three times, I think, we kicked the Edison down. They were gonna pay, but.
Heard about it was.
Twenty twenty two. Yeah, that's right.
You're going for the reserves?
Yeah, yeah, we go through there. So um. This again uh is is pre audit uh as of the end of the year. Um, so there was, we did have some movement in January with uh with some G I C maturing and stuff, but uh. Um, this is what we look like for our snapshot in the year. Uh, the only thing to know is that Cardinal wastewater that reserve is is in a negative. Position and that'll be rectified uh. This week when uh when we receive the funds from Iowa, we'll go back to reserves. Uh, other than that, uh, all of the transfers in notes uh were items that were were divided. Um, the industrial park land three three that was a a land sale that uh went in. Um, other thing of note is uh. Where was it? Um. And just the dedicated capital reserve uh transfer in represents the uh. It represents the the grain surplus uh plus the two hundred and forty one thousand dollars uh throughout the three nine. Uh, actually, to uh as it just came to my mind, uh, the previous question was in the operating budget of the operating brands. If that also includes supporting.
Thank you.
Any question on reserves?
Yes. So. The tale of the reserves. We utilize reserves. Um, the port. The dedicated capital fund. That we brought in is the bulk of the money that that is the negative. But that's. We brought that in knowing that 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 balance wasn't going to be built, that it was actually going to be spent each and every single year that it comes in, right? It's. It's to close the gap in our app to to make sure our first scores go. Go up and and address the infrastructure gap that we find ourselves in.
That that is correct. That is to uh, you know. Essentially, what dedicated capital reserve is doing is rather than putting. A a capital in. In our in our regular uh budget that would be based on ask seven point five guidelines, uh, we're we're using um. That or. Uh, or sort of that dedicated capital reserve to to follow.
Yeah, where where everybody else, you're seeing them put in two point five and three point five percent levy increases for dedicated capital reserves. Were able to utilize that excess surplus or that excess inventory. Uh, from from the port that sail off of some of that grades uh to create the to create that capital reserve when it helps offset those ongoing. Uh, increases, but it's important to note with that. That we aren't using that for ongoing operational costs. We're not putting the taxpayer in any danger there. We're actually using that towards um. Closing that infrastructure gap. It's capital cost to help reduce operational costs in the long run.
Yes, and and what this allows uh. Through the chair, if we do the twenty twenty four, we can we can take a four point two. Uh, capital budget that's fully funded uh without debts. Uh, which which is which is pretty pretty awesome. Uh, for our size. Uh, normally, we would uh. In in prior years, looking back through through previous budgets, you know, we would always be in that kind of two and a half to another dollar range. So we're we're spending more. Uh, but we're also uh. It's all coming in the expense of of our reserves. So even though it shows that it was a draw on reserves, had we not had to do that that borrowing from reserves, we would have had an actual net.
Yeah, would have actually been surplus. That's where I, that's why I wanted to address it, because if if one was to read this, it looks like we're using a lot of the reserves, but we're we're actually not. It's the the picture is actually a very different story.
Yeah.
Uh, than that. So. Um, I think it's important. It's very important to note that, you know, as. Uh, many of the municipalities, you know, I I look at, you know, Brockville, watching them go last year through an eighty percent increase and. And although they're still struggling at close to ten this year. Um, you know, we've been able to do it at uh two point eight, I think, last year for for our own. This year you're gonna do it at three. Um, you know, five percent that, you know, the the it's with. You know, fantastic forethought of those of us at this council table before to make that investment in order and it continues to pay dividends. For taxpayers. That's exactly what it's there for. So. Yeah, great. Uh, okay, um, so are you, are we finished with that?
Yes.
Are we receiving that? Is there a recommendation that comes with that or?
It's just an information.
It's an information. Okay, and so then you're gonna move on to the next then?
Yeah, so the next information item is uh Q four topic variation report. Uh, so attached is a summary of revenue expenses for the period in December thirty first, twenty twenty three. Uh, the current unaudited surplus for the township is a hundred and seventy five thousand ninety two. Dollars and thirteen cents less a hundred and thirty four thousand one oh five. And eight cents to be transferred to the Wipit County with surplus balance of forty thousand nine hundred eighty seven dollars and five cents.
Page reference, Sean?
Uh, forty five.
Thank you.
So our township revenue is in uh over three point seven six with that under budget. Uh, large string trading items where building permits were down uh due to uh lower overall activity. Um, lower capital revenues were realized due to projects being deferred. Uh, this will offset with lower capital expenses. And then interest revenue came significantly higher beside it, which helped offset other lower realized revenues. Our expenses came in four point eight seven percent under budget in aggregate. Uh, large string trading items were uh uh salary expenses were under budgeted. Uh, overall, uh, due to non union overtime not included in the salary budget. Uh, that was uh oversight on uh on my part. Uh, we have rectified that for the twenty twenty four budget calculation. Also, uh, minimum wage hikes were not included. The whole effect was. Um, vehicle expenses in uh public works was uh a hundred and six thousand over budget. Uh, but this is largely offset with lower overhead costs and parts of maintenance costs. Overall, the budget was uh very well managed by staff and no large surplus or deficit was required.
Good, thank you. Uh. You're good.
I'm I'm good.
Yeah, so I think there's gonna be some questions to this one. I'm pretty sure. So. Um, who wants to?
Uh, just that number two, the vehicle expense, public works. Uh. Uh, I I thought I thought you guys did a great job coming in forty thousand. Was, you know, uh, surplus balance. Our vehicles' expense still hurts us. Every friggin' year. And I know it shouldn't be debatable, but I just like I see. Even our grader, our brand new grader was absolutely. Sixteen grand, I do believe. Of that. It's brand new. It still costs a sixteen grand to to uh for repairs. Um, I'm just hoping that we can. New vehicles and so on. And um. It's just not. It's just not. And. The our vehicle expenses are still up and over. And even when we start buying new equipment, we still seem to have. Big. Uh, vehicle expense. And. I sure like to know. Or put my finger on why.
So.
It's it's bothersome to me.
Yeah, so um, I mean, I, there's a pretty heavy, you know, pretty good budget allocated to vehicle maintenance. Uh, you know, we went a long way over that. Is there anyone who can speak to? You know, I mean, I've looked at it myself, but.
To share our movies. A few really big surprises from that. Unfortunately, this was the major uh maintenance of some of the equipment. Uh, I think it's at two thousand dollars. Not sorry, one thousand, one thousand. One thousand hour. They have a major, the majors are very expensive. Uh, the other one was uh. One of the trucks we had painted, that was the paint underneath the aura on. Nineteen. Nineteen dash three. So that truck. Uh, now a day's ago. Include that in. So we're looking to include in our uh. Spass, the trucks moving forward, that approximately within that and just regular paint, which doesn't last long. So. That was fourteen thousand dollars. Take the old brake lines, every off truck to the that's why I last would be paid from Twitter and back to the last one.
But I mean. For the a toxic code, we've never had that issue in the past. Um, or is it an add-on now that it works?
It is now. It's not just that we did invest, because we assume that that's the way it's always gonna be, but it's not. So. Our oldest new truck, you wanna call that. Then it was, you know, under that category. So that's the one that we had said last.
Okay, and and so I assume, I mean, is it safe to assume then that we don't, I mean, the budget's gone down, right, for this this year, I think, right? For maintenance, I think it's down to three fifteen. Is that a suggestion?
From twelve fifty two to three fifteen.
So I'm just concerned that are we gonna get there this year? Or do we have more costs like that that we're not aware of for next year?
Uh, through the chair, we did account for paying one more, one more truck. Twenty five, actually. So that's the next. What was truck? Uh, had that one done and uh the new one. I moved forward. There was a request put in for the. See what the cost had paid with the truck before. It was all all assembled. Um, we're still waiting for some for hold on that, which should have substantially cheaper since you don't have to pull a lot from. A lot of stuff to.
Okay.
Uh, and the new stack for the truck leaving the word, it decides to go with the next truck. We will be putting that in this specification for the day.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, 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 Mr. Mayor to to the operation manager. So what happened to the G twenty one oh one repairs and maintenance to that creator of sixteen thousand? Did I miss that somehow?
I believe that one did have the the major two thousand hour, one thousand. So that's that's a major really can of things.
But what what why? Like a thousand on, what do you mean, just the maintenance? Was it just maintenance of thousand or like why why the sixteen grand for?
So the chair uh that the engine particular went was about, so they went to that. And that new, so.
That they covered that right on the warranty? I thought I thought something we had that. Discussion that they're gonna cover that by warrant.
Uh, the call for warranty. Just to give a service technician in case it was very expensive.
Oh, no, I understand that, but I mean. It is what? Two thousand and. Twenty. Twenty? Like two years old? How many hours of? How many?
I think there was eight hundred hours on it.
Jeepers. We don't have to worry about greater uh greater twenty one oh one. I mean, the uh. Uh, the second grader. Nobody drives it anymore because we got the new grader, so. Okay, that's all I. Want to say.
Uh, I probably. Would say that it's worth noting that, and I've said that that budget's less. It's actually, once you take into account the fact of the. Of the cost of the grader. The um.
Yeah, that's right.
The lease payment or the the all the. You know, the.
That's very, that's right.
You're dropping off fifty thousand, so it's actually an increase over last year's budgeted number. So if things go well, we'll still be there.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, John, did you want to speak to this at all?
No.
You're good with it?
Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Deputy President. I I noticed, so I'm trying to read number one, if you will. I mean, first of all, good job on the township expenses being four point eight seven percent less, right, at age forty five? I think that's that's a good news story there. I'm trying to understand that one is not a good thing. It one, it looks like a bad thing to me, but I'm trying to figure what the good things are to get us there. Salary expenses were under budget overall due to non-union overtime not being included in the salary budget. So. They still incurred it, did they not, or just?
We incurred it, yes. So that's that's why we were overspent. Overall on salary. Uh, however, when um. I would have replied. The cola for twenty four, I would go based on actuals. So that is true.
So I I guess what I was trying to say maybe try and pull out of this conversation that is. What was the really good things on the budget that got us to that under budget number, if you will? Because that's, it's good that we got five percent less, but we talked about the bad things here. What are the good things that got us there? Except, sorry.
I think one of the. Council board, one of the, one of the real, you know, good news stories was uh. Our um, our interest revenue. Uh, so we were about a hundred and forty seven thousand higher than budgeted. So. That'll offset, um, you know, a significant amount of the the salary. Um. Uh, I'm not sure if I have. Agreed with it, but uh. On this report, but um. But yeah, that that was probably it's one on on the revenue side is uh is the interest.
Thank you. And just lastly, uh, to the chair, and then I think maybe Mr. President, it might be. Well, maybe for the person, I'm not sure, but um, I look at the, we had a budget of two forty five last year for the parks as revenue. And it was only hundred K. Is that, that's a reserve transfer that didn't happen? Is that all that is?
That's correct.
Okay.
Uh, listen. Everybody's happy, no? You're good? Everybody's happy with that? All right. Is there a recommendation? I'm lost again. No, we're good. It's an info. All right, so we're moving on to work to the with. See?
Uh, this one, this one is an.
Uh, this one, this one is an update. So, uh, attach is the working progress uh report, um, so we use uh. An annexary forward, um, that accounted number zero one dash one nine one zero. And uh, the only pro uh material project that wasn't completed in twenty twenty-three was was the carbon pool upgrade. Um, the project uh will be completed in the spring before full season opens. Uh, the amount approved was uh two hundred sixty-two thousand plus non-revated uh HSE. Uh, there's currently a hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and five dollars and eight cents remaining spent with project. This amount should be transferred, the amounts carried forward, uh, number zero one dash one nine zero. Uh, then that will uh. Hold off the the expenses to that project, and then anything that comes into that project will be offset against the the money that's in the annexary forward.
Yeah, there, so just approving the whips forward.
Yeah.
Um, to um, the facilities um director, uh, Mike, the. Uh, project at the pool is going going well, I mean, it's it's looking good, I actually looked at it this weekend, and it appears that the tiling all around the top of it's done.
Uh, that is correct, the tile line in the public zone.
Yeah.
It's just the plaster and the uh. Tile lines.
Nice, they're halfway done, or a little better?
I'd say.
Yeah, and no comment, do you think they're coming in on?
Here, first on the on the.
Okay, that was my question, I'm gonna hit the one thirty-four, turn it off.
No, he, uh, the the mayor asked whether or not they're gonna be doing the project first in the spring right away, or we are.
Okay, so now.
Yes, we are still.
Thank you. All right, so there's a recommendation, the committee recommends the council director treasure to transfer one thirty-four, one oh five, uh, and eight cents. To the amounts carried forward, account numbered uh zero one dash one nine one zero, so. Uh, moved and seconded, uh, over here, is there further discussion on that item at all? There be, all right, all in favor? Move, or or carry, um, I just have one uh question to help my ignorance. Um, when there's a project that's substantially can completed like this? Even though it is still above the seventy-five, does it require budget approval, even though it's substantially completed?
Um, so, uh, through the chair, um. With regards to whip, because it's a balance sheet account. I would need approval to uh.
Anything over seventy-five, okay, all right, even if it's substantially completed, okay.
Even though it's it's a complete approved product, um, because I'm I'm putting money to a balance sheet account, it needs to be a discussion.
Okay, yep. Good.
Right, if if I may, Mr. Chair, the project is not substantially completed, it's only partially completed.
Well, fifty percent.
Yes, so usually, you're you're sort of substantial completion, you're.
Over ninety, okay. Significant.
Well, that's me, substantial completion, there's just a few divisions in the road, a few of them remain for for.
Okay, all right, so so the suggestion is anything that's, see, in my mind, it was anything that was uh that wasn't started. Would need, that was above seventy-five, would would need approval, I thought once it was actually. You know, in that twenty-five to fifty percent range that it was already looking forward, so that was more of my questions. It's okay.
Through the chair is uh. Going by process.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I understand it, yeah. Um, thanks for the correction. Uh, all right, so moving on to eight D, south center furnace and AC replacement update, and I think Mike will speak to that.
Part of the nature, Mr. Mayor, um. Just a brief information item out of last uh meeting. Uh, committee member, uh, Mr. Hunter, uh, required about the hybrid hybrid G pump system, um, I obtained the price. Um, it is roughly thirty-two thousand dollars. That's for our hybrid air source G pump. Um, taking into consideration though that, um. Based on the information that I was given from the supplier that gave us the price. Uh, these systems are potentially only good up to minus twenty-five Celsius, they could be, could be a little bit uh older, but. That's like the warranty burden is on, so they indicate that we would still need activating to.
Maybe.
Having the existing furnace that we have in the facility, because this facility has two furnaces, we'd have to keep both of them. So. That's the equation.
Okay, um, just before I open it up for for comments or questions, um. Uh, is any, is there uh mean or government, is there provincial or federal? You know, there's lots of funding for individuals to do it for their homes. Uh, and I know that's coming to an end, but is there anything that helps government do?
Currently, right now, it is just for residential, for these systems, there's no funding uh for uh.
No green and stream for energy efficiency. Interesting, okay, uh, all right, open it for discussion on this with you, you wanna wait in first?
No, I just, yeah. The problem with the with the is that. When we're discussing here, here, that here. Be keep on for a building, unless it's pretty, it has to be a ground source.
Yep. Supply is so big.
But we'll keep it heated regardless of the temperature outside, it uh. Just amazing, why why the building setup of. In separate systems in the first place. Here for the size of the building, it's not like it's it, it's a huge building by any stretch of imagination, so. I don't know, I can see that, don't have much choice, I'm gonna go on to do. Two furnaces, the way it's set up now, and this. Council's interested in sitting down and actually doing a complete revamp and trying to get it. Proud of the uh, one heat system.
Well, I think, I think, you know, from a green energy perspective, as we move forward, we can consider, you know, any of the items available for the feds for us to renovate, but at at the end of the day, we're still gonna have to keep our. At least our furnaces for that HVAC system to uh to be able to run, but it looks about anything. I mean.
No, I think, no choice right now, we gotta go.
Yeah, go.
The same, I think, something in in the future that. Maybe the government needs to look at, uh, what really be green, green energy, they need to look at grants forward to. Lower tier levels of government, because there are. But that's patient, if you look at the bridge and buildings and everything, like the municipality. Uh, uh, burns a lot more heat and a lot more energy consumed than than what residential.
Yeah, one percent, make a bigger then, for sure, yeah. Chris, you wanna?
Yeah, oh, yes, please, um, so I, one thing that that that, you know, I mean, and I I did say it as well, uh, to the uh. Uh, to the facilities director is, is, you know, and and I mean, that's what they told us, is minus twenty-five, we have a system at my house, and it says it's minus thirty-five is what it's good for, and. We, you know, we we have the alternate, we we have is is fireplace, if you will, so we haven't had to use that at all this year or last year, um. So, I'm surprised that that's where it is, but I think we had a bit of a conversation about that, that's the aspect of BMS, we have to deal with that unfortunately, so that's that's an unfortunate aspect to this, because like I said. Um, are, you know, the system we have at home is is better than that, I guess, which is odd, um, but uh, we look at, um. I know in my case, when they switched from propane to this, uh, we're heading towards roughly about nine or ten thousand dollars a year in propane fees, and it became about. Twenty-five hundred dollars or extra in electricity instead, or we did that change? Did we look at the cost, the maintenance cost going forward on the fuel, on the on the heating costs? Um, by using this versus the other, or is it because it's natural gas, or I don't know what the difference, the delta makes like there?
It is not for the office.
Not gonna be with, it's not gonna be cheaper, yeah.
No, it'll be more expensive.
It'll be more expensive.
That's what I said, keep the heating system.
Yeah, yes, I don't know that there's much talk about it than a green initiative, really. Yeah, somebody paid for it, um, anyone to send, no? All right, so I don't think there's a recommendation with this, it was just an update, right?
That's right.
Yes. Okay, thanks for that, uh, thanks for that, Mike. All right, so, all right, one of the big one. Cross fingers.
Yeah, cross fingers.
All right, there you go.
So, uh, this next action I did is to approve the twenty twenty-four capital budget. Uh, for some background, at capital budget meeting number two. Uh, which plays on end of twenty fifth, twenty four, there's a wholesome discussion on the roads to include and exclude from the road program for twenty twenty-four. Uh, folks at the discussion center around the road projects can be bundled together in significant tender, so it would ensure more competitive bids on the work to be done, and also reduce mobilization and mobilization costs. Uh, there was also discussion of ordering more picket tables than what was included in the prior presentation by the recreation department. Uh, the quote for four original picket tables was received at one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars per table, and has been included in this provision. Uh, the client thought with the original to be included in operating budget, but as per request, it is included in the capital budget. Uh, cost for the dock extension is eleven thousand dollars, and this kayak dock is five thousand dollars. After the committee's request, the dock will be portable, so it can be relocated to the other areas of the township if needed. The final capital budget for twenty twenty-four is calculated in four million two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. And it's fully funded from taxation reserves and grant funding. Uh, policy implication is that each year we shall, uh, immediately, if we're seeing year prepared as a stock budget, including estimates, while the sums. Required for that year for the purpose of the municipality, uh, and as always, any decisions over seventy-five thousand dollars must be. Approved by council, so the recommendation here is that, that the committee represents that council approved the twenty twenty-four capital budget as presented.
All right, so. Um. Let's just go this way, is a remover.
Nothing, but.
Moved by Council Martel, seconded by Council Ward, all right, now let's go discussion. It's on the table. Who wants to go, John?
Well, I just, I think a good good budget, I just have the. One little concern, sharing the world, when you. Still budgeting sixty thousand dollars to replace that half ton truck. Right, for the road, apparently. I don't think you're gonna get a half ton truck for sixty thousand dollars, so.
I don't think we, I don't think we said new though, did we, we just said. Uh, half ton truck.
No, I think it says.
Is it new?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I don't think we buy one for that, that money unless there's gonna be a rapid sale to the place on. On trucks, I know that. They're cutting prices a little bit on the, the just over trucks, but even.
It seems here.
When you look, four thousand, ten, ten, fifteen thousand dollar off, and so so you go, cheapest truck, you're, truck you're looking at, it's about eighty thousand, so. If you know, council's mail, they commented last time, he's been looking for a truck and. You may get lucky, but.
I think that's worth noting, um, so in an instance like this, I think we went through this last year, fifty thousand. And then it came back and we removed the new from it and ended up with a demo, right? Or, or that, so with this one, we can leave it in as a new sixty K and see what staff is able to come up with, uh. Especially considering that there are some zero percent financing options and stuff like, like that now, um.
Through through the chair, yes, uh, that is another movement as well, and we actually have. Uh, that tender uh closing on February twenty. So we would have a base, then a start, so it's. Nothing submitted or uh, something that would maybe have a more flexible. Uh, to pay the plan.
Yeah, okay, uh, Gord, did you want to speak?
Through the chair, I think we'll be in last session, we did say a new twenty twenty-three one.
Right.
Just part of the discussion, so it's all of the uh stocks, there are some very good deals, we've got over two twelve. Uh, different viewerships, I think it's five last year, so we've expanded the pattern in that area, um, just looking through there. In Columbia, I've seen trucks, uh, twenty twenty-three model with the V eights, four by four, for, we saw about forty-nine thousand.
So you're gonna get us there, then?
Uh, pardon me.
You'll get us there, yeah, okay. All right, uh, thanks, John, uh, further on that budget, John?
No, I think the. Yeah. Big roads budget. And recreation, uh, we're staying in there, that's gonna. Hold up on that, see that. He's got the new folder in there for the sidewalks and, you know. Only thing I would suggest, it might have been to to get in there that uh. For their own apartment, and you would have included it in a trailer, it would be all but a, but a. Single action to move these heavier equipment around.
It's a good suggestion for next year. Okay, uh, further, are you good?
Okay, Chris? Uh, yep, uh, no, I I think it's, we had lots of chat, lots of, lots of good conversation last meeting or previous meeting, I guess it was. Uh, and both, actually, but but the roads, and I I think, you know, wild and aggressive are roads to do, I like the fact that we're focusing a lot on roads this year, so I think that's. That particular, I'm really in favor of, and uh, and I asked to check the box that we have here, and great, you know, and I do want, obviously, the fire station is great, and I think we should. You know, uh, keep an eye on any other, uh, getting some, getting some more project shovel ready, but obviously, I mean, for next year's budget, but I like the fact we're starting now, anyways, to get that under here, so. No, we're looking good there, it's, uh, like I said, we had a wholesome bunch of conversations, and uh, we asked you, asked you some answers there last meeting, and uh. No, that's gonna be.
Good, thanks, Chris, DM?
Oh, yeah, I just had the one on the um. Cost of the dock extension, thought that was a little high, eleven grand, but do we, do we tender that out to who we chair to to? Up, uh, director operations?
Through the chair, um, no, we've gone with the same uh company the last couple of years, and that price is uh. Within, I believe, seventy-five dollars in market price for the additions.
Okay, uh, and it says, uh, by the community request, the dock will be portable, so it can be relocated. That's a kayak dock, that's not the dock extension, right?
That is.
Okay, it says just dock, and I just want to clarify that, that's where a kayak dock. And does he do these, no? No. Okay, no, I'm fine, uh, thank you, well done, guys, and uh, hope you can get your trucks for fifty grand, Gord.
Oh, thanks, man.
I'm pleased with the idea, they did a good job. I can let the door know that if you need a Ford Maverick twenty twenty-four, you get it for six thousand.
I like the smaller, yeah.
I said you're gonna have to years down, so.
Everybody was gonna offer years for that. Joe?
No, no. Lots of good conversation, good work.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, we've all done.
Yes. Uh, I I it it's super aggressive, uh, which is what this council wanted to do, we really wanted to move the needle, the the five around there, and and adding John and Karen to this conversation as well. Uh, uh, as a mandate, we wanted to see that, yeah, you know, that that closed. The shows that were serious about, you know, closing up that gap that, you know, we we've created over time and over years with. Um, and I was one of the people, I'm not throwing anybody else under the bus here, John, I, I know I was a zero percent guy, uh, for a lot of, for a lot of years, and I think we found a way to get. To where we need to be to close up those those decisions of zero percent, I think we're all seeing what happens when you do the zero percent, and if you just keep on one or two percent. Um, as small as that may be, you don't fall, fall as far behind, so, um. I think that this shows how how solidly committed everyone is at this table to making sure that our township gets to where it should be, to get our roads back uh in shape, and to get them. You know, back, back up in that that higher level, and um, I want to thank staff for, you know, making the revisions, listening to what we said. Uh, from that initial conversation and making it, um, it's never easy, but making it a very palatable uh conversation, and making it a lot easier. For us to get to where we needed to be, so thanks for everyone doing a part and listening to what we we asked for and what we wanted. And helping us move that forward, that's a good team, that's the result of of everyone doing their their roles and working well together, and I I just, it's, it's coming, good, uh. Trying to say thank you, I think. Uh, did I call the question? I did not call the question. I did not call the question, so is there further comments or anything else at all? Alright, before we pass the capital portion of our.
This is it?
The capital portion, let me say, yes. Do you want to vote against it?
No.
Uh, as soon as I call the question, so, and I think that um the mayor will request a recorded vote for this one, I, I'd like these ones to be uh. To be recorded, I think that they're very important votes, so, um. Uh. Alright, so it's already moved and seconded, right? We did, we did that, so um I'll start, um, Councilor, uh Ward, how do you vote?
Uh, yeah, uh, I, yeah.
Uh, uh, Councilor Mark, um, yeah, Councilor Smale?
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah.
And I'm a A as well, so five. All are, good, well done. Okay, and Councilor Smale, you wanted to wash your hands?
Yes.
Uh, three, and. Um. We are on F, right, AF?
AF.
And let's just, it probably won't be long, let's just continue, so. Uh, twenty twenty four draft Public Works Operational Budget items and uh number one is the PSD Citywide Road Patrol Software Module. And. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh tonight before you is a budget argument. This budget argument is to request not to consider acquisition and implementation. Uh citywide group control asset, asset management module software inside our uh citywide maintenance man, man. Incorporation of the module will uh create a standard areas uh. Well standardized road control for someone to control the system in an active way. Other versa permanent, personally use paper hard copies when performed road control within the township. Uh new software will create the efficiency, the administration doing the good of township. Which is currently using citywide software as an a- asset management system. Uh there is no uh financial impact to this purchase. And then.
Uh, so there's no financial impact for this purchase, do you?
Uh. So.
Still aren't. I don't know where this ends.
Or make fifty seven, just looking. Products coming out of modernization dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair, the bank, we know financial impact taxation.
To taxation.
Yeah. Development through the modernization fund.
Yeah, which is what it's, certainly what it's intended to be used for, for sure, yeah.
Uh, through the chair to, to uh. No, to uh, Chris? What does it actually do? This business case, what does that citywide group patrol asset management modular software do actually do?
This, this particular module of our requesting, uh so we do road patrols, as we do road patrol, it will. There's a, a video of the rover controlling, as there's a pothole, we'll pick up a pothole, we can stop, we can make corrections. Through this particular software, I can create a work order, generate, generate the work order instantly, right from Ryan to the. Um. And then we, the copies then are, are. It's internet based, so we have to lose internet connection over the field. It will still collect the data and monitor get internet connection and that would say it will connect them and upload directly into the. City, city, uh citywide asset management software.
Now, will it do, uh, say, for instance, when you're, like you said, uh road patrol. Uh for the winter, will it tell you the temperature and if it's close to freezing rain or?
This particular software does not tell you the temperature. Uh, that's another. So that's the uh GPS ABL system can help us with that. Uh, road patrol was strictly for documentation purposes. Uh, it just, the, the software basically takes the. Human error of. Of uh. From hard copy to, to this.
Okay.
That's why?
Well, pretty well. Everybody go, go into this. It's more. For your protection more than anything else, it's usually recorded, it's not a miss, if you record something on the road, there's a bad spot, maybe. He's recorded it instead of notice to be repaired, if something happens, you get recorded. There's no error, that's the timeframes and time zones are, are there, mostly the construction companies are going to this too on. On the projects too, that when you do a project. The foremen have that in their trucks now, they're putting roadblock up to the culvert sound, it's re. It's recorded automatically, they closed the road at ten twenty-three P M, somebody drives. Into the hole at eleven o'clock, it's already been recorded and certified, it's never exposed, so. It's. I think it's just a way of appreciation, if it is. Legal aspects of everybody assuming everybody, I think it's just.
Yeah, modernization.
Protection, I don't know whether it helps the township any, because it doesn't seem to us, that our insurance company, they don't want to play that any of these, they just want to pay them, we just. Lost weight from that.
And razor. Razor.
You can say you're right, there's a bear, it just doesn't, hey, that doesn't mean, meaning. Township did something wrong, it's just our insurance company didn't want to fight us, so.
Yeah, yeah, all good, all good points, Chris, anything?
Uh, well, somebody already stole my question, but that's okay.
No, I, no, 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 okay, no, I, I think it's a good idea.
I just, uh, no, instead of modernization, but it's an actual cost listed somewhere for the same.
Sixteen thousand?
Sixteen, yeah, sixteen, page fifty-seven, option two. Karen, anything?
No.
Alright, so then there is a recommendation, the recommendation reads that the committee recommended the council accept option two and direct staff to purchase the citywide group patrol software module. For a total of sixteen thousand dollars plus non-rebated H S T utilizing funds from the Ontario Modernization Fund Reserve. Um, can I have a mover? I'll move it. Moved by Chris Ward, seconded by Wanny Smale. Further discussion. Karen, now I'll call the question, all in favor? Period. Automated vehicle location and GPS, speaking of that one as well, Chris?
Thank you, to the chair, uh, starting to visit, but then before you. Uh, in order to enhance uh operating efficiencies. As a well improved uh risk management. Use of the uh the A B L G S systems, it's a very best practice that can install. Uh, use of C B L G S system below means cause the pain most instantaneous and continuous information, so basically within ten seconds. Uh. Concerning the vehicle and the operated additions. Uh, that's a proven crime in township, making its record concerning winter maintenance activities in a hard cop, a hard cop format. For our own devices, road control, it's rather large and. I just included my staff. Uh, for hard copying, documentation, winter vice, point in time data, manual data. Uh, as opposed to the A B S G P L G P S system, that's about a weird continuous data, so basically we're in five seconds. And never in question.
Okay, thank you, there is a recommendation that comes in this one as well. It is, uh, eighty-one of one sixty-nine, that's right. Okay, so discussion. Maybe before we go there, um, we have a clear. Um. Uh, vehicle and GPS bylaw, right, I think it was included. For monitor.
Uh, through the chair, there, there, there is a GPS uh policy, so that's a nice, it's back in, in twenty fifteen, that's sort of their lines, but we're. Um, utilizing the G P, GPS.
And no, and no changes needed to that bylaw, if this recommendation or any of those are updating them.
Uh, there, there may, there may be some uh requirements and updates uh, uh needed, um, in, in that as we.
Okay, and um, uh to staff, I guess, as well, is, this is, this is just. This is just going to be a vehicle location and GPS so that we understand where we are and what we're, what we're doing. But it's not suggesting any changes to our service levels. Just a monitor.
Through, uh, through, through the chair, it wouldn't, uh, wouldn't necessarily um change the service level, but what it certainly would um. Uh, provide, uh, as the system is right now, um, it would just be a little narrow whether the uh software was activated or not. With this system, actually, it's tied, it's tied in, so whenever it activates, it. It's in that signal, which is, which is, we get basically that. That indicates that it was active, so with respect to um. Claims, a little issue claims that arise, it provides a, a certainly a more enhanced uh defense with respect to that, you know. It's not a debate on whether, you know. Whether the sound on standard material was being applied or not being applied, it's, it's in that signal.
Right, so to further to Councilor Hunter's, or Councilor, Mr. Hunter's uh point, on the last item of this, it certainly goes a long way towards this one as well, even more so.
It certainly, it, it certainly provides that.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's not something that we need to actually activate or, you know, um. Chris was saying before, you'd have to make a note of a pothole on his, on his system. This one, as soon as they turn on the sand or it just sends the signal by itself.
It will, if you want, but the, the, that, that portion has been.
And where. Okay, alright, so just wanted to clear up those couple of little things that I thought might have been, was missing a little bit. In this one, and then I'll open it up for discussion, so, you want to go?
Sure.
You look like you do.
Um, just curious, uh. I think I'm on the right page, I wonder, is it a ten, thirty-nine thousand dollars, that's the installation cost?
I can see.
I'm not on the right page.
They're recommending one of the mills, fifty-six thousand installation cost.
Oh, okay, so if their monthly service cost is four hundred dollars. Is that telling me that it's gonna break down quite a bit, or do you have to pay that, or like, touch up anything, or?
Just.
The check through the chair, the month look, that's just the monthly administration, you can prefer monitoring a system.
Oh, okay.
Um, Deputy Mayor, you want to do?
Uh, yes, now it says please, that means all of our vehicles. Including our new sidewalk. And it can tell us what street it's on and what time it puts out and sand down and. No one can say, well, you didn't come at that time, it's all there. That's, that's worth it, quite a slip and falls. Really important, and that includes both of our sidewalks, even the grandfather one we have, okay. Um, it's pretty hefty, but uh I think this one's even more important than your pothole. I wouldn't want you to go up Armstrong Road now with that new one. It'll probably blow up on it first day or. So, I would, uh. I'm definitely, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's a first time. Four times twelve, forty-eight grand a year, eh? That we're gonna put in our budget, but it saves us one slip and fall or one bad road. Right, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, was it forty-eight grand? Oh, it's forty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, uh.
Yeah. Through the chair and the C I O, how big of an issue is the innovation, how much did we spend last year in, in? The whatever, you know?
Is that, I don't know if that's an open section discussion.
We still.
So, I, I think, I think what I can say is, uh, in comparison to, um. A, a decade ago, there, there are certainly a much higher probability of, of, of claims coming forward. Whether, whether they're successful or not, uh is, um. Certainly, uh, a, a, another, a, a, another story, but I, I would certainly say that overall in less than that, we've seen. Uh certainly an increase and uh, you know, we, we are involved in, in, in a couple of circumstances now. Where, um, I think I can comfortably say at least in one circumstance that was, uh. With, with this enhanced system, it certainly would, 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 would be helping us, uh, with respect to those. That, that, that data matter, so, that really, it really comes down, I think it was, it would don't make a lot of respect to insurance and, and, and settling, but I think it's the magnitude of.
Times.
What, what that settlement is, uh.
It's just.
Protect us against, uh, I, I can still larger settlements.
That's a lot, man, four hundred bucks a month.
Here?
I, I think it's, it sounds worthwhile to me, but uh, if it certainly helps protect the township against any, any claims that can be. It's worthwhile.
Hundred percent, what's the funding for this? No, where's it come from?
Through the chair and the modernization.
Modernization as well. So it's.
Just, just for the cost, the monthly service cost with.
The operation?
Yeah, so really the only, the only impact to the, to the rate payer is the four hundred dollars a month.
Right.
The, the fifty-six is modernization dollars that we, we received four or five years ago to help reduce city tax on our, oh, yeah, so. Uh, this is, this is certainly another good use of, of those dollars, so.
If there is an impact, we need to figure, you know, that money spent there could have been spent somewhere else. There isn't any.
Four hundred dollars a month for me?
That was the, the original. Fifty-six.
Well, when you look at a, 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 at a legal act, but at four hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
Yeah, I can see I'm gonna lose this debate, but I hear you saying, I'll, I'll vote with. They're tough down on the street.
I'm not tough, it's just. The way the land is.
Further discussion?
Yep, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, so, one question that came up when we were talking about all this, the insurance is. Does this allow us to go back and challenge the insurance company for a better rate potentially on this, I don't know, meaning we're, we're starting to track things, we have better evidence in our favor. In some of these instances, so.
I see, no, but.
It's a good question.
No, uh, through, through, through the chair, I think, uh, what I, what I can comfortably say from our, our conversation with the. Our, our, our loss record is very good, uh, in, in, in comparison to, to, to a number of other locations, and I think that. Although, um. I, like I would say, I, I want to say that those percent increases uh occur related to. Uh, the two factors are inflation and uh the, the, the loss record. So the inflation, we're not going to be able to change that, that particular component, but I think like with respect to the loss record, I think that's where. You, you know, we're probably, uh, we're, 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 we're lower than, 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 than others, uh.
Yeah, potentially could slow down the increase.
Yes, like I, I, I can certainly say, uh, that, um. Gathering up the, the, the data to provide with respect to what, 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 uh, arises is, is somewhat cumbersome right now, and I believe that this would, uh. That, that this would reduce that. Fine, and it, it's not subject to, uh. Uh, add as much anyway, of, of potential, like, meaning there with respect to not, not, not. We, we, we all know that it's, it's not a hundred percent guaranteed that, that a computerized system will work all the time, but I think it's, it can provide some a bit more. Of course, unfortunately.
And then, lastly, so, I noticed, and I mean, I'm, I'm just a, you know, just from my own experience at my own, at my, at my day job, if you will. Um, the, uh, the, the, the one tool is, is a, is a real big preference for a lot of, well, not self included, right? There's not something, this is, how does this or does this, maybe you guys don't need it to, by the way, forgive my ignorance.
Maybe you guys don't need it to, by the way, forgive my ignorance, does this doesn't talk to Citywide at all, or you're after your management system? Or is there something similar to this that does talk to it, I guess my second question, if it does talk to us? So, yeah, sorry, is, so as far as this program goes, this is a standalone program, it doesn't tie into, or doesn't, we can't import this into Citywide, your Citywide manager?
Through the chair, we can, uh, import the information from, uh, generally from the, this software, if you are.
More data for the data, god, my data. All right, so there is a recommendation, and the recommendation reads as follows, that committee recommend that council one accept option two. And direct staff to purchase the AVL GPS hardware and software from GeoTab Dican Incorporated. For a total of fifty six thousand, six hundred and forty three dollars and twenty six cents. Plus non-rebated HST and two utilize the public works operational budget to cover the monthly fee of four hundred dollars. Is that the end of the recommendation, or does it keep going?
Uh, that is, that, that is decent.
That is the extent, right, so it ends after two. Okay, all right, so that is the recommendation, I need a mover. Moved by Counselor Smale, seconded by Counselor Ward, further discussion. Hearing none, then I'll call the question, all in favor? Good, carried. And we are. On to item G, which is the Cardinal Industrial Park Systems. Uh, Cardinal and Industrial Park Systems Summary Reports, and Eric, you'll speak to those?
Through the, through, I'd like to request that I receive the twenty twenty three summary reports. The owners of municipal drinking line systems are required to prepare a, a report in the March thirty first of the following year. According to Ontario Regulation one seventy oh three, the report, uh, is required to summarize kind of flows. Compared to our water license improvements, also any adverse water quality instances that occurred during the year. And duration resolutions to those, um, we also list their capital projects for twenty twenty three. And annual maintenance plan versus unplanned, so both the water plant and the pollution systems. Uh, it is a requirement under Ontario Regulation one seventy over three, and there is no financial impacts, uh, if receiving the annual report.
Okay, thanks, Eric, uh, I think though, before I do any more or any discussion, it may, uh. It may be helpful if there's anything that you wanna highlight, uh, from your report, or, or present forward to us. Doesn't have to be, is this what you, you feel, you know?
Yeah, uh, the, the report, uh, is, uh, pretty, uh. What it really shows is that our maximum they go in, in our peak flows are well below our permit, uh. Which is always good, but what you don't wanna see is overdone succeeding your permit or license, uh, then getting too regular to review. That way, um, the, uh, graphs trying to show you the space difference on, on top of each, uh. Peak flow and, and, uh, raw flow, which shows you how much space we got left, and you can see in our, our. Maximum raw wire in, about my capacity that in the water, right? Uh, so one, one thing this report does, and one, one thing the ministry looks at is, is see where you are related to this capacity. And, uh, obviously, uh, I think the current life is still, uh, that we move there. Uh, the report also summarizes our, our, our capital projects, our, 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 our data project. Our data project, and, uh, I don't know if I'll go through the summary, but we try to see who's sorry, and so I'll be finding out.
Anything? Anything ultimately that we should be, you know, beyond, you know, that knowledge, anything that we should be on the outlook for as we move forward?
I think, uh, I think what this, this report shows is that, uh, especially with the residential developments that are coming. Um, the thing that shows that is the capacity, uh, especially in current model systems, so I think this is one of the kind of highlights.
Lots of capacity left there, right? And are you speaking only to the Cardinal one at this point, or are you speaking with the industrial one as well?
Uh, it's kind of inserted changeable, um, but the, the industrial one is a little different, because there's no, uh. Uh, specific permits to take water, uh, our, uh, we're still below our capacity, um, our contract agreements, uh. So, um, we're not, uh, exceeding that, however, um, obviously with a further expansion. And also part of something we may, you know, look at, uh, in the future, but, uh, great guys and great women, it's, uh. Where we're coming from as well, and maintenance is, uh, free somebody in that place. I think, uh, one aisle there is our purchase of, um, spare earths and, and, uh.
Uh, certainly a fantastically run and maintained, uh, system, I don't think there's any doubt, uh, there, I don't know, so. Questions?
Yeah, I, I just have one, Eric, and that's industrial, on to the chair to. Uh, industrial park and annual water consumption, power went up in, uh, twenty twenty two, then came down in twenty twenty three. Is there, I know the answer. Is that a lead, no?
Uh, the typical consumption why it went up one year to, um, typically it's a variety, it's typically the best release. Um, we, we, uh, sometimes the industrial usage may be actually due to consumption, when maybe he was, uh. Non-resolved leak within their company, and we had notified them about that issue, so, um, I would say it's a couple of.
Okay, I can't, I couldn't remember that, okay, good.
CIO, CIO.
I, I think, I think, your chair, what, what is certainly the case is that one of our, the shield users, uh. It, it's, we know, uh, that, uh, that, that, that opening end actually discharging into, uh. Ultimately discharging the sewer, so we, we not only had an increase in, in, in water consumption during that. Our percentage are, are uploaded to waste land, so there's, that, that was on two separate occasions, and, uh. Staff did a great job, uh, recognizing the issues, uh, quickly and, uh. Followed us in, that, that's quick, she started that, that's where it explains the, the increase in that year. And I guess the other point that we will know is that we, uh, we, we have reached out to the town of Prescott. With respect to, to conceding another, uh, potentially, uh. Be able to increase the, 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 the capacity that we have on monthly basis. Hopefully, we'll, we'll bring something forward, for later issue.
We still.
Well, it was more to that, thanks for, Mr. CIO, for, for mentioning that, I was thinking that we see that, when we see the Prescott water report that we get. I think sometime in the next few months as well, don't we, that's when we had that conversation last year, so. I think it was a good, you're, anyway, actually, to the, to the mayor's point, we talked, uh, about this report in general. It was like, it's, it's true, there's not a highlight section to say, here's the, here's the, here's the good things, and here's, you know, ideally. If there's anything we're worried about, just a quick little section to say, you know, here's the stuff I'm worried about, so we can focus on that. Well, well, whatever, just a lot of detail that, uh, that you had to put in here, but, uh, but I just thought if there was a summary, if anyone, nice to see for. Last night for me.
Staff, as a, I, I made you know, the, the, the basic requirements within the summary report is, number one. Are there any areas of non-compliance? And basically, it is what we're doing sure that you have, that you have current output capacity. Or whether you have to look at, at, at something, extension. The remainder of the report, we'll, we'll call it, is, is bonus information, but I think it's very, very helpful for, for committee and council. Be aware of, uh, of, of a number of those activities, but it's really, really go to core components that I was actually. Uh, through the act, uh, with respect to, or sort of the two that they mentioned. Both phases.
Reviewing and receiving our water reports are, are a must for. For, for the group that sits around the table, for sure, so, um, if there's no other comments, I will say, uh, thank you, Eric, to you. And in the group, we continue to do fantastic job, your reports are always presented in a very clear and concise manner. Um, and, you know, both Dave and I said, um, at the Prescott, uh. We have a seat, we own a, own a seat on the Prescott Water Board, um, uh, with Prescott in, into that. Fact as well, a very well-run, very well-managed, um, facility, um, that, that Prescott has as well, so. You know, we're, we're lucky that we were able to work with, with them in the collaborative way that we, we have, and hopefully, I think. Uh, as Mr. McConnell asked in our last discussion, that we'll, uh, we'll have some, uh. Open and transparent discussions, as, uh, regarding the contract, so. Uh, I think there's a recommendation, right? Yeah, there is, so the, uh, the recommendation is that committee recommends that council receive the twenty twenty three water summary report. For the Cardinal Water System and the Industrial Park Water System over. Seconded by Counselor Smale, further discussion, all in favor? We are. Um, oh, we're stubborn, so, uh, Eric, you gonna speak to this one as well?
I guess, uh, for the chair. This will be the twenty twenty three, uh, annual wild provision, and all of that, but this is, uh. It's a report that is required, uh, under, uh, under ECA, uh, to prepare and submit any reports to the M E C P. Prior to March thirty first of the following year, um, the main models of this report, um. Um, it's, that summarizes, uh, pretty much from the assistance of the plant, and all are made adequate, uh, criteria. That's here, the O D, the suspension, um, fosters, uh, all, well, well, our compliance, uh. Limits, so, yeah, so, the graphs in the report, I don't mind, whatever we have to do with years, we will see some practice. That's, uh, you know, one of the reasons we use the effect on compliance, and for the whole part for. Um, the report also summarized our requirements under calibration, so we got to be able to, on their process of living. As well as unplanned, and, uh, and maintenance, uh, we did also have a couple, uh, uh. Reports that we had to do, so that is centered around the, uh, the other, maybe, uh, well, he can be. And the second one is, is the peak flow rates, so that's kind of, um, means, uh. And final pilot, so, yeah, it is a requirement under ECA for the system, and there's no, uh, considerations.
Good, thanks, uh, thanks, Eric, so. Uh, one thing that I probably should have said on the la, on the last one, uh, it was nice on the, uh. On the bottom of, uh, page one oh eight to, uh, to actually see the, uh. The common acronyms page, so that you didn't just, you know, I, I actually appreciate that, because there's so many acronyms when you see ECA. And MECP, and, you know, all of that, and it's actually nice to see that little, I love lost or meant to say that before, so. So, thanks for providing them, they're easy to forget sometimes, and not for you guys, but for us. Uh, so there is a recommendation with this one as well, I will open it to, to comments, but I'm gonna move directly, see if somebody will move it first, so that. Uh, committee recommends that council receive the twenty twenty three annual report for the Cardinal, um. Uh, Water Pollution Control Plant and direct staff to submit the report to the MECP prior to the March, March thirty first deadline. Can I have a mover? Moved by Counselor Martel, seconded by Counselor Ward, discussion. Hearing none, I will call the question, all in favor, good, carried, and then on to, I. Uh, for the sanitary collection performance.
Through the chair, this is a new report, uh, as required under, uh, major ECA, uh, provision. Uh, this report must summarize all, uh, the agents, and non-plans, monitoring data. The overfill is the summary of purpose for reflection, so, because this is P C A report is not only for the Cardinal. It's also for Spencer, those collection system, and Chuck, so the ECA kind of, it's not all our collection system, it's only one. So, the, what I did with these records, I summarized the last, uh, findings of, uh, uh. Consumption, and graph, and you'll see, um, one of the objects we're working on through, um, is to convert on standard manual. Some areas where there's been known infiltration, so the idea is we wanna see, uh, those numbers coming down, um, in the graphs. So you see below to the, the graphs, um, I highlighted the flows that went up and down, and it's typically based on situation. Our hope is with, um, planned maintenance and, and, uh, sanitary manuals and, uh. Continuing to not reline in the future, that, that, that comes down. Uh, I also summarize quite extensive, uh, list of our meetings, definitely done in all processes, we can see it's, uh. Play extensive, uh, in the part of, uh, working out, uh. Uh, the report also summarized calibrations that are now required under this report. This report is, uh, submitted by the March thirty first, so you'll need some proof. It also wants to be uploaded, uh, to our township website through the, uh, there is no financial. Impacts with the proceeding of the report, and, uh.
Uh, all right, so, recommendation with this one again, I'm just gonna read the recommendation first. So the committee recommends that council receive the twenty twenty three sanitary collection performance report. And direct staff to submit a copy of the report to the MECP prior to the March thirty first timeline, can I have a mover? So move in a second there, okay, now discussion. Yes, yep, um, so, uh, I guess, uh, you, uh, Eric as well, so. On page one forty one, I guess, the charts of the industrial parks sanitary collection. Uh, I guess all of them, but in particular, the industrial, the hard fund, as well as Spencerville one here. There, you know, well, especially industrial, but there are so much higher than they were in twenty twenty ones. Um, and, and, you know, as you said earlier, the goal is to bring those down, and so, um. And are we gonna expect to see an action plan around this to get those down, or do we have something we can do to that, or?
The, uh, with the, with the total, I don't want to assume that's all infiltration, with the industrial, uh. Expansions going on industrial park, they have to reuse water, I guess, so any place that uses high water consumption. Directly will affect the sewer, so, um, what we can do, what we can kind of control is, um, addressing some of that infiltration. So without a delivery, they don't, they don't, which we are, I think, we have twenty twenty two, or project list, um. And Spencerville also is, uh, funding, you have at least, uh, three or four animals that we're looking at, so. So that's kind of, uh, so, I'm hoping within the next few years, we'll start seeing that drop, and it also depends on the industrial usage, especially in the.
Just one more thing on that same topic, so is there a, a ceiling we should be concerned about at all, or is it just, we're just monitoring this?
We're monitoring, it's part of the, uh, the requirements that you're supposed to, uh, monitor, um, uh. Kind of the flows and the I G D and the C crime, you know, this, or is what, what kind of potential corrective actions you're putting in place? And there's many, this is the standard animal, or, uh, or standard replacement given for two, um, and possibly more.
Hey, uh, anyone else? Um, uh, to, um, Mr. R, we. Applied, if I'm not mistaken, for, to MECP for the possible discharge or second discharge from Spencerville? Um, are we?
Well, well, we're gonna be in the process, that would be part of this, this is, that's, you know, this is strictly your collection system. That would be part of our, the unit system, which has its own ECA.
Okay, all right, so, yeah, when you said all the ECAs were included in this one.
Uh, not mine, but it's, like, it's just. Of each of the districts.
Freezers are still set.
Yeah, okay, all right, good, thanks for the clarification, all right, we'll save that question for a different time. Uh, moved and seconded, any further comments or questions in regard to the collection? Seeing and carrying none, then I'll call the question, all in favor? And we are on to the recreation fee schedule, and Mike, you gonna speak to that?
Certainly, uh, I'm, I'm sure, so, um. The statute has established, uh, recent piece of bylaw for, uh, the Recreation Department, um. The fall of twenty twenty one was the last time we, uh, uh, updated the changes to that. Um, those, I just put it in the, January twenty twenty two, um, what I've done. Um those places put in the back January twenty twenty-two, um what I've done. I'm gonna be on with the patch, the ice arenas, there has been solid over contacted and um. We, by a happy to two percent increase, will be in line with uh Prescott Rockville. Um slightly below North Bramble and slightly ahead of uh what South Dynasty. The existing bylaw makes reference to the figure skating clubs. Um past council had a ring in there for figure skating, not figure skating ring. But that was only charged to the Spencerville Skate Club. That wasn't uh for the last couple of years, uh Prescott Figure Skating Club had rented the base months. That fee was not uh implemented to that. Also, uh talking about summer programs, similar diet breaks, the campus swimmer and the. Swim programs have not been adjusted for a couple of years. Uh during that time, we've had three separate occasions where the. Mineral weight rate has increased. Um so we have adjusted some fees there, uh we go through each time individually if you would like.
I don't know that you need. I mean, if everybody's read the report, Mike, I I don't know that you, if there's something somebody wants to ask about or or highlight maybe, but I don't.
The one thing I will say on the action, the uh we taken out the access pass. We we used to have that in there when there was a charge for public swimming um and and what have you, but. That is precharged now, so we take that access at the actual bylaw.
Yeah, okay, that just for clarification, on page one fifty-one. Under lessons for cross cross medallion, is the two twenty-five. When it was one twenty of um. An error, or is that an actual increase of that amount?
That is an actual increase.
Okay, that's the only one I want you to speak to.
And those are um with in mind with the life saving society, they're not figures that we just have a current agreement. That's when we go to anywhere in this holiday that is.
So it's going from one twenty per session to two twenty-five?
That's correct, the one twenty used to be plus a manual, now the two twenty, uh two twenty-five, I think it moves the cost of manual, which is forty dollars.
Alright, uh I'm gonna, this one, you wanna, no? Uh I had one and uh uh I apologize, I maybe should have said this uh just as a heads up question. Because it was just a curiosity, and yesterday when I was looking at this, um the uh the for the arenas, the 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 non-resident. Um fee, you know, I I look at that and I wonder, does that, you know, limit us from getting resident? You know, non-residents coming in, and I, you know, we want to make sure that we reserve uh the space for for residents at the at the lower rate. But is there, is there something there that would help us to bring more business, do we know, or is this what we look at maybe? Um if we reduce that rate to the same rate, but had a different, a different system for them, we will not get the prime ice with a premium or something like that, if that was.
Three to two comes from work, that rate is probably the one that's used the least amount in in Billings. Uh for example, if there's a recreational group, whether the um. Ladies rec or men's hockey, if there's one individual on the team that is from the Miss Valley, then they give the. That is only if the complete team is, might be the extra bucks, that of the participants are are from the Miss Valley. So that one gets used on a decent amount of all of our.
Okay, so I just, I I just know, like I said, we're looking for more views, you feel the ice faces, if that's something.
And that's primarily for rec hot, for rec hockey, and if I don't like to do, like sample minor hockey uses, I assume us, we don't charge them the non-rate. Because our teams and players that go there, my base don't get charged the.
Okay, thank you. Just to follow up on that, so uh North Bramble Minor Hockey Rented, they pay one fifty-nine fifty.
That is correct.
Yeah, now, are we still in, uh I I missed your, or I missed it, are we lower than North Bramble? You said we're the same as Prescott and Brockville.
North Bramble is just uh slightly lower.
They're higher than North Bramble, and what about South Dundas?
They're slightly lower.
Slightly lower. We got two, so, yeah, I mean, I, I like the minor hockey, one fifty-nine, three bucks, it's not gonna make or break.
You know, I just uh through the uh merit to uh Mike, I was just, when you were doing your report there. Figure skating, is it like, there's no more figure skating in Cardinal, or especially, like, do they all might have made the Prescott, or?
That is correct, uh during COVID, the Spencerville Skate Club uh. Twenty twenty-one was the last season, they paid uh rent raise uh in Spencerville. Um during the shutdown of the uh the leader of the Prescott Figure Skating. Realized I just at both facilities, um when the Prescott are willing, the Spencerville Skate Club goes. They picked up some of their participants uh in Prescott, so when they need rent home, when Prescott, Prescott went back.
Uh I I just one for my own, um. When it comes to the, I get why we do the non-resident and the resident for the uh for the non-prime time and for the for the prime time. Uh but when it comes to the dropping, um do we know if. Our neighbors, do they do a drop-in like that? Like, is Prescott doing the drop-in? Can I go and skate if it's not rented in some spot?
From my understanding, they have started implementing the same program.
And will they charge me as a non-resident more than they will a resident?
Yes, they would.
They will.
Yeah, like, so for example, if you're not from within our municipality, you would admit it, so if you're from Prescott, you get fifteen dollars.
No, I'm saying, I get how we do it, do do, I'm asking if Prescott does.
They have to pay for them.
So I'd be, I'd pay fifteen dollars there, and and somebody who lives there would pay ten.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure that that's not a. It's been mentioned to me that it was a little bit of a sticky point for for a couple of people and. And said, I've never heard of anybody actually being charged the extra, but really? Yeah, it was, yeah, cool, but you're talking about five bucks, so.
Well, ultimately, but even the other panel, we people say, oh, I like work there, um. And we have some non-against means or something like that, they say, well, I really like work. If they really want to work, then they cannot be able to, well, power grid, and we'll make sure this. And drop it, we use all movie yeah.
Okay, good, uh I have no issues with 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 this, I think it's getting it in line with. With where it should be and with, you know, with everything, there is an increase, it is what it is. Um there is a recommendation with this, isn't there, Mike?
I guess.
I lost my. So move. Alright, there we go, seconded by Chris Ward, uh further discussion. Carrying on, then I'll call the question, okay. Good, alright, so ATV clubs, uh special exemption and uh. Rebecca, or Clark, sorry.
Um staff received two requests back about the ATV club mid-last week. The first being a special exemption for the ATV club to have. The southern most point of Rock Street up to the what we call third bend. Um in order to access privately owned farm road. Um for a private farm rate event on February twenty-fourth. The request is that I just spoke about return by law, which have within it a second sort of essential extensions, but. It is something that would be approved. With that being said, um it is only about eight hundred and sixteen meters long. Um within consumer that third G I S, right? Um once we receive this, staff did contact property owners to confirm this event is set or resell on that type of property. Um however, our contacts at the Johnson ATV Club. Um indicate that they want to do this more frequently than a one-off. And um want to expand and request that the portion of Rock Street. Be in a long way basis and be integrated into uh the trail network. And that would require them in this for a lot of looking at that. Um I even see in the report, the staff contacted um the property owner. It was not being planned for future events, it was a one-time law. So it appears when I'm speaking with the ATV president. There was a mix of communication where that individual was speaking with not rich top of the moment. And and that may be difficult, um so the president of Johnson ATV Club did aware of that. And they'll be speaking with the property owner for any future requests. Um going forward, he is aware of the report coming forward as it is. Uh the recommendation is to go uh back to council, accept and grant a one of the special exemption. But we're being staffed in the field at this time.
Good, thank you, uh Ray, John, you know the property owner?
Yeah.
I I read it, and I'm like, alright, just, yeah, so. So hosting a an event, the one.
They they arranged uh through my son to ask. If I'd host this one event for them, and I agreed to host the event for them, they never mentioned to him and to me. They want to hold more than the one event. And the problem, as I spoke to Mr. Grant, is that. That road is, right now, it's not deemed a part of the trail. I don't mind, mind, mind being, yeah, so they can come there on a special occasion. My problem with it, if it becomes a part of the trail, even when there, there's not a special event on. Anybody that's out of the, out of the town that gets a map from them, it comes down that road. There's no place to go, only my cropping, to handle that that road.
So where do they go?
They run it with with a special event, they're gonna have it in their head, well, we went there the last time, it's on a trail, it was just one. On on down.
And you don't want them in there?
I don't want them in there, plus we got quarry in there, there, you know, the way they go, where they follow the trail, and it's marked that time. The next time, it's easier to turn in my quarry road and run that way, go through the quarry than it is to. Move down, down the other way, way, and they gotta cross the, across the field, and when it's spring, the year, the fall, and the crop drop. I have no problem with one special event becoming, but when we got corn and beans and stuff planted, I don't want them running around the side of the field, so.
Mr. Hunter, when they come across the ground here, where are they exiting, or past your sugar?
They're actually, they're on Kind Road twenty-one. Down our lane way to cross the one field and they have to cut, cut. In about twenty feet on on my quarry property to get out through the gate, I'm back on the road to come, come. Come down through, well, you know, where the gate's second, the gate chart, you can really just run that and put down the thing and then I'll let you. Move down the town with over twenty-one when they.
So you would be liable if they went off that cliff in the corner?
That's right.
Okay, so the recommendation is pretty clear, and it's grant the Johnstown ATV a one-time special exemption to access the designated area in Rock Street. On February twenty-fourth for the club's fundraising event, and to remain status quo with trail network as outlined and approved within the bylaw twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. I don't really have, personally, I don't really have any interest in opening that up, and if they do, they, I I believe they can go and make a presentation if they. Uh have a reason and a need to open up that bylaw for further. Further changes, so my two cents on it, um I do need a mover though for the recommendation. I'm gonna move by Councilor Martel, second there, second of our Councilor Smith, further discussion.
Uh yes, I I I'm with you, Mr. Mayor, I feel uh. To have, you know, to go to the pancake, have it on February twenty-fourth, great, I travel that road every day, and I share with a woman. See ATVs come at any time off and going around those curves, I mean, I know exactly what would happen.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It'd be more than the A ATV.
The trail without the guard, good, they come down the ground, and then arms around the road is straight. Right, straight across, and you can see them coming.
Exactly, and that road goes, you know, with direct turns and and it's, it's, it's an accident that happens.
Not sharp.
I'm uh, yeah, I'm definitely against it, and. Probably with the excess noise, my hens wouldn't lay as good either, so I'm gonna leave it at that. No, it's very, very dangerous, I think, traffic lots, yeah.
Okay, uh further? There you go, and I have a mover in a second, alright, alright, then I'll call the question, I'll do. Good, carry, uh inquiries and notice of motion, anyone have an inquiry or notice of one? Hearing none, mayor's report, uh not really a report, um not sure if everybody uh is aware or um. Was aware that there, you know, with the warm weather. And not much of a winter this year, there's obviously not a lot of ice, but there's a lot of people. Or a small amount of people trying to access the ice to stealth fish. Uh this weekend, it lands down, uh a couple of people went through the ice, I don't think that it was an ice fishing accident, but. But they were on the ice, and a couple of people went through, and I think we've lost uh two or two or three people uh to that. So to our residents and to anyone uh non-resident using, you know, the canal area and and our rivers and our areas. Uh use so with extreme caution, I know in in this case in Landsdowne, two of the fire department uh people that went out were. Were injured in trying to do the re- the retrievals. And and I think they were seven miles from the nearest access point um where they had to, they had to get to them, so. So please, please, please think of others and everybody else that, you know, volunteer firemen that you might put at risk every time you go out there. Um add a totally different discussion, I would say the deputy mayor and I uh today attended um. A homelessness uh discussion with um the group Indwell. Um in in Brockville with uh members of the United Counties of Leeds, Grenville. On the, looking at the potential of helping to reduce the binding list from from a hundred and six people as of right now, down to nothing. Um the difficulty with uh with that item or with that issue is not so much the capital costs. There's a great deal of collaboration on the capital costs, it's the ongoing operational costs and to run that facility. Um Indwell indicated that they would need five, five million plus dollars uh yearly to. To run that facility to help those hundred and six uh people, so. Uh they continue to work with Ministry of Health to see if they can find a funding model uh to move that, move that forward. Uh and that's it, do I need a mover in a second there? No, um question period, there is nobody online, we, sorry.
I I'm not sure what else to make up for. Uh with respect to the twenty twenty-four budget, we went through the operating. Like uh briefly, there wasn't much in the way to change it with respect to that. Is there a comfort model to bring that to the February twenty-three? Maybe if we look at approving the estimates, or do we want another look at the operating budget? Prior to.
Uh uh that's a big question, I'll do a quick poll, um I think from from um. My perspective, I think with the discussion that we heard at the table today, there's very little concern with the number that's being brought forward. I didn't see or hear anyone attempting to reduce uh that number to any great deal, I think it's going to be reduced. Uh just by the fact that the United Counties is going to come in a little bit, a little bit lower. From from my perspective, I'd like to see it brought forward, um I I don't, didn't hear anybody, unless I hear anybody now. Uh not wanting to bring that forward for approval, I'll just assume that it's going to count, so. See one is one. I mean, I I would like to see us add some sort of a dollar value to uh the communications conversation, I want to see that on there, but otherwise, I have no problem, yeah.
Yeah, you're.
To be discussed, I guess, during the next meeting. Uh I think that it was agreed upon that we would see a communication strategy or potential communication strategy coming forward in March.
Through the chair, that 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 is correct, and uh there 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 may be uh some potential to utilize. The 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 safely start uh dollars, so if we, if we reach that uh that that point for that signage. Uh so maybe I'll reincorporate it in.
So can we? February 26th bring the final budget to the table?
Um, I I.
And a.
For the staff perspective, we can certainly bring the uh, the uh. Bunch of estimates for the third, third year of the federal. The tax, but it is upon the factory to the bylaw, we'll fill that later, later, please, once everything's set. As far as the uh, the bunch of estimates that we have that. That came along in 2016.
So when broke.
Uh, well, we won't pass the bylaw that night. But ultimately, we will pass it in principle.
Into the chair of the certain. There would be, there would be opportunity to change areas that that a bunch of estimates could be, could be passed. That that's separate from the tax rate by law.
Correct, the bylaws, the bylaw. Ultimately, so how would you like to have you grant? Would you like?
We'll do it.
So upon, uh, I think upon a, a, you know, completion of that bylaw, um, I think we um. In our very early, in our our first term of council, the deputy mayor and I and and councillor Hunter and. Um, but I think Ms. McKinstry was still CEO with. Um. Uh, made the suggestion that we all go to um, uh, you know, a local restaurant in Spencerville and and celebrate together to show, you know, goodwill with staff and and council and any members of the committee. And I'd like to see that uh, that uh, you know, come back again. I think it's, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good news story for all of us. And I think it's a little good team, team building exercise to uh, have a, have a ginger ale or a Coke afterwards. Like to see that, see that uh, if possible. You don't have to. Uh, so was that, was that, did you have more questions for questionary?
No, it's sorry, sorry. So I'm clear, we're, we're, we're moving the. Bringing forward, no, no additional changes, we'll just postpone bringing that forward on the 26th. And bring that forward to the uh, March council meeting.
Um, we're talking about two different things, right? We're going to approve the operational side of the budget, but not the budget bylaw. Is that, they're not two separate things? I see no reason for delay, so I mean.
No, I don't either.
I think if you think your budget, I mean, if you think your budget's gonna go through, waiting till March doesn't. Unless there's anything drastic. I don't sense that there is, but.
Okay, so I think we will, we will bring that to that.
Is that enough time to have everything prepared or set?
There is enough time to have that.
Right. Very good. Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um. Any other questions for questioner? Sorry, sorry, I mean, uh, just having a little fun, just having a little. All right, so there's no closed session. It is a German, uh, move by deputy mayor Delavos, seconded by councillor Chris Ward, non-debatable, uh, all in favor.
We'll future, don't you get the month of March up?
No, it's the. It's Tuesday and it's not.